The meeting will be called to order. The Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, regular Township Council meeting of January 19th, 2016. Mr. Paluso?
Adequate notice. This meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 17th, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 22nd, 2015, and the Newark Star Ledger on December 24th, 2015, and was reported by facts by the local newspapers and local radio stations on December 17th, 2015. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Accounts Channel 21 at 11 o'clock AM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipiny.net.
All right, let's stand for the flag salute. Mr. Paluso?
Congratulations.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Present tonight are Mr. Karifi. Oh, roll call. Excuse me.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Mr. De Piero.
Here.
Mrs. Graniani.
Present.
Mr. Paluso.
Present.
Council President Louie.
Here.
Excuse me. Also present are Mayor James Barbario, Business Administrator Ellen Sandman, our Township Attorney John Inglescino, our CFO Ann Cucci, and our registrar is Nora Jolie. Upcoming meetings are February 2nd, 2016. That will be our agenda meeting at 7:30. And also, our next regular meeting will be February 16th, 2016, at 7:30 PM. We have some presentations that are going to be taking place tonight. Mayor?
Katie, this is the Township Council.
Hello. Pleasure to meet you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Leave these, Katie.
Have it to the best of us.
This microphone seems to be working well. This is proclamation, the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, whereas human trafficking is a borderless crime against individuals that violates the most basic human rights and deprives victims of every shred of personal freedom. And whereas human trafficking occurs when a person is recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through the force, fraud, or coercion for the purpose of sexual or labor exploitation, involuntary servitude, and other types of mental and physical enslavement. And whereas human traffickers target impoverished and marginalized children, women and men, isolating them from society and supportive networks, and exploiting them for personal and monetary gain. And whereas human trafficking is a modern-day slavery, a crime that is in direct opposition to the fundamental principles of liberty and human rights upon which our nation was founded, and a violation of the 13th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which was ratified in 1865. And whereas the underground nature of human trafficking makes data collection difficult, however, the United Nations International Labor Organization has estimated that more people are now harmed by human trafficking worldwide than they have at any other point in human history. Approximately 80 percent of the victims are women and girls, and 50 percent are younger than the age of 18. And whereas we recognize that New Jersey is a prime location for human trafficking because it is a major national and international transportation corridor in a culturally diverse state. And whereas many victims trafficked in the United States do not speak or understand English and are unable to communicate to seek rescue. Under New Jersey and US laws, any person under 18 involved in the commercial sex industry is considered a human trafficking victim, and victims include US citizens and documented immigrants. And whereas although the federal government and the state of New Jersey have enacted laws to prosecute human traffickers and protect survivors of human trafficking, traffickers use techniques to keep their victims enslaved that severely limit self-reporting and require broad public awareness of human trafficking issues for enforcement and prevention to occur. And whereas the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills stands committed to protecting human rights and individual freedoms by supporting the goal and the ideals of the National Day of Human Trafficking Awareness on January 11th of each year. And whereas the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills commends the work of the New Jersey Coalition Against Human Trafficking for its statewide efforts to end human trafficking through education, advocacy, and assistance to survivors, and to increase coordination and visibility of New Jersey's commitment to end human trafficking. Now therefore, I, James R. Barbario, the mayor of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, hereby proclaim January 11th of each year as Human Trafficking Awareness Day in the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, to raise awareness about the signs and the consequences of human trafficking, to promote opposition to human trafficking in all of its forms, and to encourage support for the survivors of human trafficking throughout New Jersey and across the world to put an end to this criminal activity and restore freedom and dignity to survivors. Katie, that's for you. I'm going to say a few words, and then I'm going to let you take over. I spoke, I forget when it was, a few months ago, at the Morris County Police Academy with the attorney, assistant, well, the Acting Attorney General Hoffman, and with our prosecutor, Fred Knapp. And one of the things that astounded me, that you would not believe, is New Jersey is number seven in the nation when it comes to human trafficking. And I, from what I understand, we reported the case here in Precipiny. And as the mayor, and I seek the council's help on this as well, we are going to hopefully have our police department become educated in this advocacy for human trafficking. I know we all know a lot of people in the township. I have a daughter, several members in the council have daughters. And you know what? It's really become, and it continues to increase, and the only way we're going to stop it is if we stop it at the local level. So, I'm committed, Katie, so you know, and I know the Township Council is committed as well. So, I want to thank you for all you do for the Coalition as well, and if you'd like to say a few words.
Yeah. I want to thank you as well, Mr. Barbario. You've been very dedicated in this cause, and you've helped us bring this to the League of Municipalities, which will bring this issue and raise awareness to all the local areas in New Jersey. The Coalition, if you don't know, is the New Jersey Coalition Against Human Trafficking, and we have been working for several years to raise awareness on this issue through advocacy, education, and service to others. And we greatly appreciate the work of our mayors, and it's a very important cause. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Katie. Mrs. Peter. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Next on...
You're good.
Next on the agenda, one of the things that the council had asked, and the mayor and I spoke about it, you know, there's always a need for communication, and information is key when we want to make sure that our residents and our community is well-served. And one of the things that we need to, I think, to delve into a little bit is not only meet the new nurse, but I asked Michelle Bakone, who is coming anyway, but to come up and just talk about, just in, you know, just in a couple of words, what does the nurse that, we have a part-time nurse now, and what will Mary Ann be doing? And then Mary Ann is here, and she will introduce herself to you, but I thought Michelle, who has lived and worked with this for many years in our community, and I think the public, as well as the council, and the mayor, and myself, and Ann could know, I know some of what is required, but I know that there's more things than that.
Yep, that's... Thank you. Thank you, first of all, for giving me the honor of eventually introducing our new full-time public health nurse. And when I say "public health," that means the health of every person in Precipiny. And my mother always said, "If you have your health, you have everything. If you have your health, you can, if you don't have enough money, you can get another job, you can, you know, take a walk. If you have your health, there's really no limit to what you can do." So that's why this public health nurse addition, full-time to our department, is so important to me. We'll be able to complete our school audits. The public health nurse goes into the schools of Precipiny. Precipiny has a huge number of schools, and audits the health records, making sure the children have gotten the adequate number of shots. They hold clinics. This way, we can have more clinics that will serve every resident in Precipiny more efficiently. There, just the computer, just the data entry alone is a full-time job in a public health department. The government requires, the federal government wants to know the diseases that are occurring in the country. They can discover trends, they can, with this data, they can perhaps see, you know, we always think of a terrorist event as a huge event, but this way they'll be able to see more subtler events that might happen in a crisis. So that's why we, this huge town of Precipiny, a town this size would have probably two full-time nurses and several part-time nurses. We're finally getting a full-time nurse after quite a number of years. And Mary Ann, I'm so happy to welcome you, and we're ready to have a few words from you. Please welcome Mary Ann Willis Cuciara, our new full-time public health nurse.
And as you can see, we're a family town. You get the whole family out there. They're her backup singers over there, so...
Beautiful.
Good evening. My name's Mary Ann Willis Cuciara, and I'm very excited to start on Monday as the public healther of Precipiny. I've lived in town my entire life. I raised my family here, and I think it's a great place to be, and a great place to raise your family. And I'm really looking forward to working with all the residents of the town. I do have a lot of experience in town because I volunteered for many years, and occasionally still do, for the First Aid Squad. But I'm very excited to starting Monday, and I look forward to working with all the residents of the town. Thank you.
Mary Ann, how long have you been a nurse?
I've been a nurse about nine years.
Nine years, okay. And before you came here and did your volunteering, what else, where did you work, and what other things did you do with regard to this?
I started at Sinclair's, and then from there I moved to Bayata Home Healthcare. So I have a lot of experience with clients in the community, and what their needs in their home may be. I also did work part-time for the town as a public health nurse for a short period of time, but I did need a full-time position, so that's why I decided to move on, and then a full-time position became available. And I love doing the work, so that's why I came back when the position was available.
Very good. Thank you very much. And one of the things that Michelle mentioned was some of the clinics. What type of clinics would you be addressing?
The flu clinic, I know that's a big one in the full-time. And I know they do run some of the clinics for the pediatric children who don't have insurance.
Right. Do they also do any cancer screening and those kinds of...
They do. They do cancer screenings. I know they do male cancer.
Okay. Very good. So Mary Ann will be busy?
I think so.
As Mary Ann said, she's been a resident of Precipiny for years on a rockaway neck. You just follow the footsteps of your mother, who everybody admired so much here in town, as well as I, and your service to the community as well all those years. So, welcome aboard. It's really nice to have you there.
Does the council have any questions of Mary Ann or Michelle?
Just welcome. We're looking forward to working with you, and I'm sure you're going to do a great job.
Thank you.
And maybe after, you know, you're here for a while, we can have an update, maybe next, beginning of next year, of all the things, the additional things that were able to be included in the public health arena, and we welcome you as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Because we needed some more information, you know, we needed some information as to the requirements. I mean, we have 53,000 people, and I know that will keep you busy. And then, you know, as far as, you know, working with the seniors right at the community center, so...
It's going to be great.
Yeah, I think you'll have, it's good you have some extra help back.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ellen.
Okay. Thank you, Lou. And again, one of the other questions was asked, or request was made at the last council meeting, and you'll find that we are dedicated to making sure that what's requested, information, have presentation, will be done within, either at the next, very next meeting, or the next properly assigned meeting. So, that's what we're going to work together to do.
Thank you, Ellen.
So, without further ado, I did present to you backup information with regard to the water questions that were asked, and in fact, the gentleman who came out and asked about the water quality, you can see that he's not here because our water purveyor, our water superintendent, Kevin Ryan, went to his home and spent an hour with him going over all the details, and he was very satisfied with it, and he wanted to let the council know that he was pleased with not only the fact that he got his answers to all his questions, but that, the personal touch of Kevin going right to his home, twice actually, so...
Great.
We wanted to do that. So now, without further ado, the big guy, Joe Beckmeyer, formerly of Jersey City and Newark, to come to the quiet little hamlet of Precipiny and its sewers already, giving you an update as to what he's found and how he's moving forward. And Lee's going to keep him honest.
Yes, he will. Good evening. Again, just a short little presentation, some highlights, I think, that we've uncovered, I mean, I've uncovered, and some progress we're making. And I'm sure there are many others, but I just didn't want to spend all night and so on. Met with the employees, got to know them in the sewer utility, and also in the township. And with the sewer utility, those employees, I think they, I'm getting to know what their strengths are, their weaknesses, what they can do, what they can't do, and they understand what I'm looking for and what's going to be required of them. We had two employees with many years' experience retired. One was a senior pump station operator, and the other one is the supervisor of maintenance repairs. We've gone through the interview process, and we're ready to appoint those new positions. Prepared the draft budget for submission to the administration, sat down with the staff to find out what their needs are, because they know the problems aren't feel better than I would or any of us. Once we went through that list, we put it together, submitted it, and just to let you know, the one thing is that we know request this year for additional capital funding because I found out, and through the assistance with the financial officer, there's quite a bit of money that's sitting there that still needs to be expended. A few projects where they started, but they sort of haven't moved along. One is the hydraulic study for the Lake Hiawatha area. I've been in contact with the engineer to get that moving along. We have a contract for high-voltage testing at the treatment plant. Maybe you remember, a few years ago, there was a major failure of the electrical equipment, and we believe it's necessary that on an annual basis, we have inspection of the high-voltage and also the medium voltage equipment. So we're in the process of having those specifications prepared to move that onto the street. There was funding for a new CCTV camera, the camera that crawls through the sewer to see what the problems are. That's been sitting around a while. We're getting that ready to go out to bid very shortly. Also, a project a few years ago was a GIS geographical information system. The work was done, but it's been sitting there, trying to get that implemented so everyone has access in the department to that information, and it can be properly used to track where the pipes are, and then also keep track of what maintenance and repairs are done on those pipes throughout the system. Also, we would have information in individual house connections and so on, rather than coming back and trying to look through file cabinets in the office to figure out where everything Let's see. One of the projects being revived right now is the Skyview Pump Station, with replacement of the Skyview Pump Station, redirection of the wastewater from over the top of the hill to the Greystone Treatment Plant. That was an agreement that was approved by the township not too long ago. However, it sort of sat around. I'm trying to get that revived to help with our attempt to lessen any legal issues we might have because we're connected to another township.
Yes.
So we're trying to get that revived up and running as quickly as possible, because that's where we should be. Let's see. The treatment plant improvements were completed about four years ago when in operation. However, there's like a feeling, well, it's new. Well, unfortunately, in the wastewater field, the atmosphere that occurs in sewers, pump station, and treatment plant is somewhat harsh compared to other places. This equipment has been sitting there, but there really hasn't been a certain level of specialized maintenance. The maintenance that the employees can do has been proceeding. However, we have two major components in the treatment plant, is the variable frequency drives for the raw sewage pumps, pump all the wastewater into the plant, and the variable frequency drives for the blowers, which are the main heart of the aeration tanks for the secondary treatment process. Very specialized, we really can't do it in-house. However, we didn't bring anyone in yet to take a look at it, so we've brought in both the manufacturers, technicians for both of that equipment. They've been reviewing them, testing them, making modifications, finding certain things like pieces hanging by wires that have to be repaired, and also giving us suggestions of how we can improve the system to make it more efficient. We found out that we don't need to run two blowers as originally designed, we probably ought to do with one blow with a couple of valve improvements, again, saving on electrical costs and so on. And, let's see, in June of this year, Lantern has incorporated, started their operation of their FOG facility on-site. We're in the process of fine-tuning the administration of that lease, and then also what their wastewater has been discharging to us, because as they've ramped up, it's additional wastewater, a little stronger and so on, so we're in the process of going through that. And again, if anyone would like to take a tour of the treatment plant or any of the facilities, we'd be happy to give you a tour of those. And if you have any questions either tonight or any time in the future, you know, give me a call or drop me an email and see if we can provide the necessary information.
Great. Great recommendation. If you're going to go visit late July and fully August.
No. Today would have been a better day, you know, because the...
Just a quick question. How are you with manpower overall down there? Is there a need for further personnel down there?
One of the issues I found with the manpower is that we're a very mature organization.
Well said. That's correct there, okay.
I would say the average age of the workforce is probably in the mid to late 50s.
Okay.
And, you know, that has its advantages, experience, knowledge, and so on. However, I believe it's necessary to bring in younger, some younger employees, newer employees, that can learn through the process, that we can, they can learn from the employee that are there with the experience. We can send them to school and have them develop into the future operators of the system.
Yes.
So that's something we've been working with the administrator and the mayor on, to get some employees in there for that. Also, I've had discussions in-house, because change is always resisted, but I feel there's probably a way we can move some of our employees around to be better use of the existing employees.
All right, great.
So...
So you have your hands full, and it seems like everything's going to go in the right direction now.
It's a challenge, but I enjoy it.
Okay, great. Wonderful. Any questions?
Yeah, just one. The catch basins, I understood that there was some necessary maintenance on that. Is that being, paid attention to?
Well, I don't know, and the reason is because that it's not under the sewer utility, catch basins. That's part of the stormwater system, which is maintained by, I believe...
Well, Greg and the engineer, Justin, is...
Yeah.
Oh.
But if you have any catch bay, I know about catch basins, you have any questions?
That's all right, I'll ask them.
Oh, okay.
And just for a correction, I know when speaking, and there were things that were led to lay for a little bit, study after study, and it wasn't addressed because of the many things that were, all the moving parts down there, so it's not really a pointing. But with regard to the Greystone connection and the Sky, what is it?
Skyview.
Skyview. Skyview, that really didn't let sit. That was just something that has taken a long time because we had to go through the process with DEP and with your meeting with the county on that. So, I don't feel that that laid at all. I mean, that was very aggressively attacked, so...
Well, and I don't know the details, only though when I see an emergency from a few years ago, I start to say, you know...
Yeah, well, basically what was happening there was we had to get approvals from the state.
Right.
I had to get approvals, you know, from...
The county.
The county. And the fact is that we have, you know, we're pumping the water still, and we were satisfied on that part. But the process only goes as fast as the state moves, and you know that, I mean...
Yes, it's a complex situation, and I've already been in contact with the Department of Treasury, the county planning, because the wastewater master plan has to be redone in order to allow the water to go to a different location, or else the DEP won't even review the plans to give you a permit to construct it. Also, I met with the county planning department, because where the pipe was originally supposed to discharge would go through a Green Acres facility, which there's an additional challenges and so on, so we're looking for a more friendly route to bring the pipeline to its discharge location.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to...
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to Resolutions, non-consent agenda.
This is...
Great, thank you. Mr. Paluso, can you read off on Resolution 2016-037?
Yes, Resolution 2016-037. Resolution of the Township Council, the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills, appointing an acting township clerk. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Paluso, second by Mr. Karifi. Roll call?
Before the roll call, I'd like to make a statement if I may.
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to explain, in Robert's rules, you're supposed to make statements before the roll call. When the roll call starts, there's supposed to be no discussion. I'm going to vote no, and it has nothing to do personally with Mr. Madden. I was really not a part of the process, the selection process. We did have a number of certified township clerks that applied. We had one local applicant that applied, one applicant who was a former deputy clerk in town, and moved to become a full clerk in another town, and applied to come back here. So we had fully certified people that were willing to take this job, and yet we've hired someone who has no certifications and no experience as municipal clerk. I'm opposed to that, and for that reason, I'm voting no.
Council President, if I may please?
Yes.
I'm going to state strictly from a business point of view. I think when a major appointment has to be made, and I will liken it to my business, all of the key people that are involved in my business, we sit down and we interview the applicants. I know this was not something that is done, but I think it would have owed this council well to have all of us, and I'm including myself. I know I was not elected to serve on this council until January 1st. But I think if we had all met the gentleman that was applying for this job, or perhaps met with the last or the few prominent applicants, I think perhaps this process would have gone a little better. That's...
Okay, since I'm the council president, and I was on this board, I was part of the committee with myself and Mr. Paluso. Unfortunately, this is an event tonight that should be something that the township should be, all be happy about, that we have a candidate here that's highly qualified. He's been an attorney for the past several years. He has his law degree certification, his bar in the state of New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and New York. He's an appointment from Chris Christie. He works for the Attorney General's Office. He has obviously a very diverse background in law. However, we're going to get back to the, how the selection process went through. I was put on that committee directed by, at the time, Council President Karifi, and I worked endless and a lot of hours with Mr., which our vice president at the time, Vice President Paluso, which I'll be quite frank, I spent a little bit much, too much time with him at the time because he has his moments, so I have to say that with some humor here. But I will tell you, this selection process by Council President Karifi, when he obviously assigned us to that committee, every elected official appear at the time, Councilman Stanton was up here at the time, Mrs. Graniani was not part of the process, and Mr. De Piero. So my point of the matter is, is if those council personnel wanted to be part of that committee process, I had no problem stepping to the side and letting them take place and be involved with that. However, I find it kind of insulting because we were told through this whole process that, "Oh, you're lucky if you get a few candidates that apply to it." Well, it went from a few candidates that applied to it. Well, it went from a few candidates to about 30 candidates. So I give Mr. Paluso a lot of credit, because he came up with a very, very detailed hiring process and a criteria, and it took, trust me, a lot of time, at least two months. And there was a lot of dialogue with the business administrator, Ellen Sandman. And I will tell you, what was interesting in that whole process, we probably had about five attorneys to six apply for this position, and we had other, you know, members or clerks from other towns that didn't have their whole entire certification. But I will tell you what I was kind of shocked about, that we had clerks that were applying here that were making more than the mayor of our town here, Mayor of Barbario. They're making between $130,000 and $135,000, and they're at these small little towns. So, you know, some of those individuals had issues with the salary, and we went through a very rigid process where it was narrowed down. So I kind of find it a little bit political here and appalling, that we're gonna bring up on, oh, dark hours, we're swearing the individual in, in front of his family members, that this whole process was skewed. There was nothing skewed about it. You're an elected official, you have every right, you're a leader in the community, if you had an issue with the process, you could pick up your phone and call the folks that are on the committee, right? You can meet with them, you could have dialogue with them in regards to the criteria, the individuals maybe in particular that were being interviewed. And I will tell you, we spent a lot of time with Ellen Sandman on the phone, our business administrator, having dialogue with her. So in regards to saying that this process wasn't fair, that's political nonsense, and this is not what should be taking place. Now, when a member of our town, a member is now gonna be a member of our team, you know, making these discussions now, which is political rhetoric, okay? So, just to say, if there's anybody else here, Pierre, would like to say a few words about this before we go to vote.
I'll say a couple of words, since I was on the committee. I was honored to be chosen for the committee. You know, my expectations, according to what I understood, was a few people would apply for the position, and no more than that. It would be a very quick process. There was approximately 39 applicants that I remember. Out of the applicants, we had to put into a process. It was too cumbersome to interview each and every one of them, person to person. So what we did was, we actually went through the resumes, we reviewed them, we discussed it with the business administrator, Ellen Sandman, and we made determination which ones we would like to have an interview with. We did a telephone interview at that point, between two councilmen, we've contacted them, jointly asked them structured questions, all those questions were very similar in nature, and we actually got it down to about 12 candidates in which we wanted to interview personally. We did interview a number of those candidates personally, one-on-one, and we did converse with, again, Ellen Sandman to talk about the process, and because she is the acting clerk, we wanted to give her the step-by-step process of where we were. Along those lines, we had been blessed by having several people that were attorneys that applied for the position, a couple were paralegals. We found it very interesting, and we started wondering how that knowledge would relay back to the clerk's position. We were honored to speak with the one we're nominating, putting forward, because he's actually barred in three states, New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania, and he's familiar with examinations. One of the exams it needs to be taking is only several classes in order to get certification, and the council will support that. In regards to interpreting the language of state statutes and laws, as a clerk, you need to put your hands on things very quickly. He has that knowledge and ability and a skill. He supervised over 11 people, you know, we have a staff right now of three. You know, he actually overseen four boards, so to say he wasn't qualified, he overseen 39,500 licenses approximately from four state boards. The Board of Accountancy is one that comes to my mind, which is a very large board. If anything, his qualifications are well above this position. So, you know, in reviewing this person's qualifications, the person has already met with staff members, the person was willing to be outgoing and sociable, and one of the criterias we're looking at is customer service. It's an important skill that sometimes we lack on our level, you know, working with the public, and it's important that we have people that can deal directly with the public, and that's something that he brings to the table as well, because he has strong customer service skills, he managed a staff of eight people as a front-end manager for a hotel chain. So when you add all of his combined skills and acumen together, he is a strong qualified candidate. And I will echo what Council President Valori had mentioned, is that all councilmen were given the opportunity to call us on the committee, to talk with the candidates, or to be part of that process, and it was quite cumbersome over two months. So everybody had an equal opportunity to chime in or ask questions or part of the process, and that was their choice. So I'm honored, again, and elected motion for roll call.
I'd just like to add that, I'd just like to state for the record that we were given the opportunity, once the committee presented us with a name, we were given the opportunity, the rest of the council members, to meet with Mr. Madden, which I know for a fact, myself, I met with him along with the mayor, and I know Mr. Stanton and Mr. DePiero also met with him, so we were given the opportunity to meet with him and ask him any questions or concerns that we had.
Correct, after the decision was made.
Okay, before vote, actually.
Alright. We'll go through, on our roll call?
Okay. Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
No.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You wanna, you wanna ask your wife to come up?
Mayor? Yes. The entire council, myself and the mayor, will read this in.
Nothing personal.
You get to stand next to him if you'd like. You gotta, you know, because look at all those folks, so you gotta stand together. He needs support there. No, no, no. I don't know if you brought the Quran?
Did you bring it with you?
No, but I can just attest.
You're gonna affirm?
I do. Oh, okay.
Okay, I thought...
He has one, I can do it on that, or I can affirm.
I think you want to affirm?
That's fine.
I mean, whatever you want to do, I...
I'm just gonna do it right now.
Okay, that's fine, no problem.
I mean, Rob has it, if you want. Are you talking about a Bible?
No, he's gonna get the Quran.
Oh, he's got the Quran? Okay, good, that's why we're saying no to the Bible.
So what we'll do is, you guys wanna stand around here, and wait for the mayor to come in, and so everybody's in the photo here?
Thank you, thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Jim.
And we're just waiting for the mayor. I can't think of the mayor.
Yeah, that's good, I'm glad he had it, yeah.
I just said I can't think of, and you're trying to help us out here.
Great.
You can hold it.
Here, I'll let you read it.
Alright. You have it memorized, huh?
Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Khalid Madden.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
Sorry?
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do further solemnly affirm.
I do further solemnly affirm.
That I will impartially.
That I will impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform.
Perform.
All the duties of.
All the duties of.
The office of.
The office of.
Acting Township Clerk.
Acting Township Clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, get to work.
Get to work.
Congratulations. Welcome, sir. Congratulations, welcome to the family. Mayor, thanks for getting that.
No, that was good. That was perfect. Before you say, say something when the mayor comes back.
Yeah, absolutely.
What I would like to say is, he has already been to work, he's been here on Sundays and after-hours, and I've met with you, I know Ann has met with you, some of the staff has had an opportunity to just meet you briefly, but he's already been working and has done a lot of homework already, and we look forward to great things in working together, so... Anyway, I just wanted to let you know that, and I know...
Thank you.
You've met with the mayor as well.
Yes, absolutely, Ellen, thank you for the kind words, I appreciate that. I just want to say that I really do look forward to working with all of you. I've had the opportunity to meet most of the administration, not including all the council members, but I welcome all of you to please come, come to the office, I begin the 25th, come on in, let's sit down, let's talk, you get to know me a little bit better. And I do believe in, I understand the votes and the reasons, and that's, that's fine, but I, I would like the opportunity to sit with you, and this way, I believe, once you get an opportunity to know who I am and get to know me, over time, I believe that you will think that you guys made the right decision. So, thank you all, I look forward to working with all of you, and that's it.
We start Monday, right?
Yes.
So you have the minutes done by Tuesday?
Monday night, Monday night.
Just, we'll all be here on Monday to see you, we have a lot of questions.
Absolutely, I welcome it.
So we wish you the best, and welcome you and your family.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. One of the councilmen had asked, when would you be starting on the 25th, time-wise, and I said, well, we start at 9:00, so I said, but knowing you, how I've gotten to know you, I said, maybe more like 7:00 AM or 7:30, because he says he knows he's gotta hit the...
First one in, last one out, so...
Just to let you know, Ellen is full of energy, so...
No, I, yeah, I actually, I've had the opportunity to sit down with Ellen and actually Ann as well, so...
Oh, Ann, you're being quiet over there, I didn't see you over there, okay.
But I definitely believe that it's gonna be a great working relationship, and I think together we'll do some great things for this town. And just, just want to make a quick statement, that I have been a resident for this town for 28 years, so I'm personally and emotionally invested in this town, so it's very important for me that, you know, I, my reputation to, to the council members, to the public, is always is, you know, the best it can be. So I really want to just say that, that, you know, I'm not just a worker from another town, I, I'm someone who's grown up in this town, so it's very important to me that we all work together and we all do a good job here, not just for us, but for the town and for the people.
Wonderful.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, bids to be taken, none. Requests for quotations, proposals, and qualifications, none. Ordinances and second readings and public hearing, none. It's public hearing. I'd like to entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion bid by Councilman Karifi, second by Councilman Paluso. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Is there anyone that needs to come forward? Roy, you need to sign in, and you have about two minutes? No?
Two minutes?
Five minutes?
Hold everybody up. Roy Nelson, McTendrumland Drive. Like always, I'm not sure what's gonna go on in these meetings, but Ellen, the acting township clerk knows it's 9:00, not 9:30?
Yeah, no, I said he will start at 7:00 AM.
You know the joke, you know that it's not a joke, you know what I mean?
Ellen knows it's 7:00 AM.
He knows. A lot of other people in this room know what I'm talking about, right?
But I wanted to make sure, this is not on his time, right?
Yeah.
So I just wanted to say, 7:00, he said he's an early riser, so...
I'll tell you the story behind this on the time. You'll get to know me.
Oh, you're no Roy.
I think you know it already.
Second thing, I'm glad that the new superintendent from Uteri stuck around, because I'm respectfully requesting the council president ask him, I can take time on this, I'll give him time, what our reserve should be. Nobody's been, Ellen? Did you hear my question? I know you got...
I apologize.
I'm asking that this supervisor, a new super...
I'll answer it in a few words, while I'm answering.
Yeah, no, no, well, I don't expect him to have it tonight.
Okay.
Because he made a very good point tonight, he's got all this money down there, and I will spend time with you, sir, and tell you where that money came from. And I will be requesting a tour of that complex, because when it was done, the public wasn't invited, that's a couple of years ago. Okay, old news here, but it really is something, because today I just got my, the other day, I got my New Jersey tax reform booklet in, and I want to, because some of you guys and women weren't council people, and John Iglesina was a township attorney, but if you could pass this on to your best buddy in the state, I really appreciate it. On page seven, it says about rental rents, and you're able to deduct 18% of the rents that you pay. Now, in Precipiny, we average, with the exception of the units on the top of that hill, we average about $1,200 a month. $1,200 times, times 12 months, times 18%, is, everybody can do the math, I know we got Brian here tonight in the back. I'm usually much better than this. $2,592, John. The average that the apartments pay is only $1,200. So not only do taxpayers like myself, and probably most other people in this room, get socked, they get a deduction that's in far in excess of the taxes that are actually paid by the landlord, okay? And the landlord is only paying $1,200 a year, understand? On both sides, taxpayers like you, Lou, myself, everybody else in this room, we get it. We get it in the short, so I should say in the pocketbook. That's gotta be resolved, because what they should do at these apartment owners, landlords should be required to send out a 1099. And we're all getting 1099s here, mine are coming in the mail left and right. That's number one point. Number two point?
Two minutes, Roy.
That's all? Shoot. The bad news, that Senator O'Toole is resigning. So you know my point is on that, he made a $7,500 contribution to the Morris County PAC a couple of years ago. I am running out of time. Again, ladies and gentlemen, I brought up last meeting, that we are paying in this town $50 per employee to IDA and to Ryan Graham's, what's I call, Fairview. The norm in the state is $25 for a town that's self-insured. I want to know why we're paying double. It's actually even a little bit more than that, because the norm is under 25. The mayor just stepped out, but Ellen, if you could follow up on this, I got on the Precipiny website today, at 8:45 AM, why is the February events listed and not January? I mean, I don't expect you to answer me that, I don't know if that's, you are the BA.
Why is the February?
Yeah, February's listed, but not January.
I believe it's corrected now.
Oh, well, it wasn't corrected at 8:45 this morning, or somebody else brought it to your attention?
Yeah, it's been corrected.
Yeah, I think it's corrected, yeah.
And also, on the website, it has proposal 2015-28 retirement payouts, is that being gonna be discussed tonight? That's on, that's on the website too, right underneath the February events.
And what is it saying?
Says, proposed 2015- number 28 ordinance, retirement payouts. So I don't know why that's up there. Somebody's, not saying you two, but somebody's sleeping at the switch. Regarding the special officers that the mayor swore in on January 4th, what exactly do they do? The special officers now, I never saw that before.
We got about 30 seconds?
Yeah, you'll answer me at the end, that's alright. And the other thing I just want to bring up, I mean, I'm real disappointed tonight that Kevin Ryan wasn't here, even though I know well that he went up to Rich Rosenthal's house.
Right.
But the public should know what was discussed, because Rich brought it out in the public. Kevin Ryan should still show up. And the last thing I want to leave everybody with, our great astronaut from this town, he's working for Telsa, you know, the car, how do you say it? Tesla, thank you, Tesla.
Oh, great.
So you might want to buy some stock there. Little bit of financial advice there. He's a good man.
Ellen, do we want to follow up?
Yeah, but let me just follow up on Kevin Ryan. Kevin Ryan not only went there, and I have a report, but I also provided a report to the council with regard to the other questions that were raised. For example, the fact, in great detail, he did put together a report in great detail as to why we went to get the agreement with the Jersey City MUA with regard to water. What I will do is, and I just ran out of time, and going forward, I can have Kevin come out at the next meeting, but I can also have that documentation put, you know, in its synopsis on the web, to answer those questions, because we did address them, especially the one about the concern about the health issue. And that was answered, you know, quite well, also in writing. So we can certainly do that, but I'll do it in both forms. And instead of putting Joe on the spot with regard to the money, and I know it'd be great for you to take a tour, but I think what Joe basically was addressing was the capital improvements, that he was not going to ask for any new monies, because there's been monies there that they're going to investigate, we're going to, together, review to see if the money is still needed for any project that's still there, and reinvest that money, not do new money. And as you heard, there's no capital request for that. But there's more to that that needs to be offline, discussed.
Thank you, Ellen, for the follow up.
Jonathan Nelson, 202 Patriots Road. Actually, I'm glad that, Mr. Beckmeyer, is that how you pronounce it? They're still here. One thing that he mentioned with the Skyview pump station, I guess it was about a year and a half ago that the plan came in and the council had to make a decision on which route they were going to do. That night that the former director of utilities gave the presentation, there were three options. One was repair the original pump station, go and continue pumping the sludge back to Precipiny. The other one was going to Greystone, and the third one, I think, was sending it to another town.
It was sending it to Morris County, which was the third.
Right, which wasn't really, wasn't practical. So it was really, it was one of the two options. Now, Mr. Beckmeyer just said tonight that because of the Green Acres property, that the Skyview pump station is going to have to go to an alternate route. How much does that change the price tag over the cost of this project? And if it does, then should, and then if it does, should we revisit maybe possibly sending the sludge, keep going back to Precipiny, since we can certainly handle it?
Yes.
So that was it. And then my other question, this is my third time up here, two resolutions I asked for, Ellen, I know you're going to say it's above your pay grade, that's what you said last time.
I didn't say that, I said.
But if somebody can give me an answer, the council voted on a resolution, if people don't like it, or they believe that there's a conflict or not, who has the authority to void out a resolution? And I still haven't gotten that answer. And that's it.
Okay, you're done?
I'm done.
Okay, great. If you want to do a follow up?
One of the original plans was to bring the pipeline from the same pump station, same location, bring it down the hill, and make a right up onto the property to go into, now which is county property, where a dog park is located, to an existing manhole, because it was the shortest route. Worried about the delay in getting the approvals from Green Acres to do that. So instead of making a right turn and heading up the hill, we're going to run the pipe straight down the road, or on the state side of the road, to another manhole downstream a little bit further. One of the issues with the agreement says that we're responsible for that pipeline we're tying into, if there's any problems with it. I haven't seen, I understand it was video CCTVed, however, I haven't seen that yet, I'm still trying to find a report, but I've been told that there were certain areas, it's an old clay pipe with roots in it and so on. So we're probably going to be required under the agreement to make improvements to that pipeline anywhere from the point where we connect downstream. So I don't think there's going to be, I don't know what the numbers are now, but I don't think it's going to be, anything will be a substantial increase because of the rerouting of the pipe. Okay?
Thanks.
I have a question?
What was the other question?
I can't keep up with your questions, I apologize.
I'll say it again. I asked the status of two resolutions, that unless I was hearing things that were voted on, all resolutions passed two to one with one abstention, and these resolutions don't have resolution numbers, and I can't get an answer if these resolutions exist, and if they don't exist, under whose authority don't they exist under?
Okay, I'll refer that to the business administrator.
Okay, I did answer this one time, not the last time, but the time before that, and said, either offline or on camera, or whatever, I said that it was my understanding that they weren't, they didn't take, because there wasn't sufficient voting, there was not enough people that could vote on them. That's just my understanding. I can't, I can't, I can't give you an answer, I can't make up an answer that will satisfy you, because in my heart of hearts, in my morality, my understanding is they don't, they didn't, they're not, they didn't rise to the form of to be able to have a resolution.
All right, that's an answer.
Yeah, I mean, it's an answer.
What I would just suggest is, maybe you meet with the business administrator offline, or, you know, to get more of an answer from her or direction, and then hopefully we'll have this resolved.
Can I just ask who said that it didn't rise to the enough votes, since it was, I believe it was two to one, and there were two abstentions?
I don't think I, I'm just saying, my personal, I mean, okay, how do I say this?
A two to one with two abstentions, to me, seems like it passes.
It wasn't so much verbalized, it was when, this format is not conducive to this, I leaned forward and I looked at John, and when I didn't get any response for the answer, whether it needs to be in closed session or not, I felt that that was my answer, which was what I just said.
All right, here's what I'll do, so.
So I don't think, I don't think I'm the one that you need to-
Okay, that's fine.
I think it's a legal question.
What I'll do is, I'll get offline with the business administrator.
I don't think Ellen can answer that question, I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm trying to say, I think you got to vote some-
Just say you can't answer it, that's fine.
Okay, and I'll try to get more of a definite answer here. Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to come forward? Pat, if you could sign in, state your name.
Papatacho, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Following up again on a couple of things, responsible bidder resolution, have you met on that? The status of the Karifi reimbursement. Last thing we heard was the mayor was going to get in touch with Devine. And when I questioned him on that, he said he was in touch with him, and the email and what have you, and got back to the mayor, but yet we still don't have any answers. So, I mean, how much longer can we continue? Please get some answers. Get this done. This is so ridiculous. One thing on Hawkins Avenue, a few, maybe a month ago, there was a slight house fire, turned out to be some kind of a dryer fire or something. But in the process of going to the house, they found that 14 people were living inside that house. Okay? Now, this is on my block, and I know there are many more. One of my questions is, is that, okay, you found 14 people living in that house, and apparently they were told to leave. But now, what is the town's backup? Do they back up and check on this a month, two months down the road, three months down the road?
Absolutely. What I would like to do, Pat-
Don't ask for the address, I don't have it.
Can I have the address again?
I don't have the address.
Okay, all right, can you call me tomorrow?
Can you get that information for us?
Yes, I can.
Please, give me that. I know we wait till the end, but this is, this is so important. I mean, 14 people, unbelievable.
How did you confirm that there was 14?
The person that lived across the street.
So they witnessed, or?
Oh, they were witnessing a lot of stuff over, I mean, you know, when somebody, you know, there's cars constantly out in front of a house, people going in and out at all hours, you know?
So was it an event at the house or anything? Was that kind of the normal occurrence?
Yeah.
Okay, so Ellen, if you'd follow up.
I have it, and we'll, yeah.
All right, three minutes.
Okay. And one of the last questions, and I doubt if I'm going to get an answer on this, but the resolutions this evening are missing four resolutions from the agenda. Okay, from last week, the week before, whatever week it was. You're missing the resolution on Inglisino's appointment.
Yes.
Kalath's appointment, Tremblay's appointment, and Avery's appointment.
Yes.
And the only thing I can assume is that's why they're not showing up, is my assumption would be that they're going to be held over again, and it's my sense in voting on it. But again, we still have the conflicts we had, and I don't think we should be being represented by a lawyer who's in conflict. And that's just my personal opinion, but I do believe we're going to keep having problems. And you keep wanting to do this, hey, the taxpayers are going to, you know, eventually lose their patience. Thank you. Oh, Khalid, welcome. I think you'll be a big asset, especially with Oprah Request. Now we know we're getting really fast, because you know what you're looking for. Cool. Okay, thank you.
Pat, I'll just answer your question, in reference to the responsible bidder.
Yes.
That I was looking for. I did meet with Mr. Inglisino prior to the meeting, and he did have some information, and it's still being researched, going through some of the other towns and information that we have. So we are still working on it.
Thank you.
And Pat, in regards to those other resolutions with the individuals that were pulled, I had reached out to Mayor Barbario, because I had some questions and concerns as council president, that I wanted to discuss with him, you know, offline, in private, and then, you know, we'll move forward with that.
Thank you.
But thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you.
Pat, one of the questions that you had, must have been several weeks ago, was in reference to Hawkins Avenue with the construction of the Bank of America building, I believe, on the corner. You had indicated that there's construction vehicles parking on the street, or an end or refuelling.
They're their own cars, they're the employees for the construction, they pull up in their own cars.
Yes. I just want to say that I was passing by the other day, and I thought about that conversation that you addressed at the administration, and I just want to relay it to Ellen as our business administrator. I did witness vehicles of construction nature being parked on Hawkins with their emergency signals for a length of time, because actually, I passed them the first time I went shopping, came back, and I seen them again.
Okay.
And were still there.
Same vehicle.
Same vehicles. And they were parked in the wrong direction of the street. So if you're supposed to be going down on the right-hand side, they were actually parked the opposite direction with hazards on, which could create a hazard for anybody driving, since it was nighttime.
I'll alert the traffic bureau again.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And while you're there, any buses, or the buses?
I haven't seen them.
Okay, good.
Can you state your name, ma'am?
Oh, we all know who I am. I'm Beverly Casper. I live in Normandy Village. And I want to thank you for what you've done, what I hear tonight. You've given us a wonderful director of aging, who's done a lot of innovation over there.
The A-Team.
And you've given us a nurse now, that's going to make sure that we're going to be healthier, in addition to the health plan and the health things you're doing for the employees, to make sure that they're there to do their job feeling well. And we've even gotten the Stars and Stripes back where it should be. Remember?
Yes, you see, you're very observant here.
And while you're, while I see in the background, you have Mr. Stanton, Mr. Stanton, I just want, not that you were talking, but I just want to give you the proper credit. Who fixed the flag? Ellen and who? You. That's the one that came in, he said, before she comes in, let's fix that. He says before, because he-
I said, she had half hour grief.
Yeah, right. Meant that affectionately.
Well, that was a long, that was a long time in coming, and, but something still needs to be addressed.
Okay.
The thousand homes that have the horrible hydrant law hanging over its head, their heads, and all that goes with it. There was a big incoming this weekend, and where does that leave Mr. Shovel and I? Same place that I've been for the last two years I've come. This is year number three, guys and gal. This is year number three. I've been pointing out that you haven't been fair to those of us who have the ordinance hanging over our heads. And we're responsible for our neighbors' safety, and we shouldn't be, even though some of them have had the use of that hydrant when their homes have caught on fire. The state has reduced the fine, but I'm, I think you have addressed the ordinance, it still has it at $1,200 a day for not clearing that hydrant. Ladies and gentlemen, enough's enough. Something has to be addressed. Also, the handicapped spots on every one of the sidewalks don't have an ordinance covering that to be opened. That must be done. That is law for the disabled. So at your earliest convenience, would you please look at that and decide who's going to be responsible for cleaning out those mounds of snow that get piled on that? Although, I heard something interesting tonight. One of the, one of my fellow recipients said that the apartment people are getting a deduction. Why can't the 1,000 households who have been shoveling it, like myself, for 50 years plus, why can't we have a deduction for doing that on our taxes? Have you thought about doing something nice for us?
Two minutes, ma'am.
Pardon?
Two minutes.
Well.
You're doing good.
I can't tell time.
So you're doing great. Patient yourself.
Have a heart. This is my third year of coming, and believe me, I have something better to do, even though you're all such nice people, and you smile at me so graciously. I pay over $11,000 plus in taxes. Do something for me. After hearing about deductions from everybody else, it'd be nice if we had a line deduction. Please, do something. It isn't fair to those of us who have that ordinance hanging over and the fine. Now, if the state has reduced the fine to $72 a day, I might rethink about my soapbox. But lady and gentleman, do something about that ordinance. It's not fair. And I clench every time I hear a weather report coming up. The fire hydrant is too important. We pay fire taxes that do not cover that. You need to look at it. And please, do so, because even though you're all pleasant and I hear all these wonderful things that are going on in town, I think I could find something better to do on a Tuesday night than come here and hit you over the head with how I feel about what we have to do. And Mr., how do we bring Mr. Shovel in, because you have to see the condition he's in, because I used him this weekend. It's not funny.
It's not funny, I know.
It really isn't.
But it's cute, I'm sorry.
If you haven't noticed, I'm a little old lady, and I'm tired of shoveling.
I haven't noticed. You're not as old as you say you are. I can't believe it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Ellen, is there anything that you'd like to address, or regards to the ordinance, or?
No, I think it's more of a legislative.
Remember you gave it to me that the state reduced the fines to $72, and you still have it on the books at $1,200 a day?
All right, all right.
Okay.
So we'll, you want to address it, we'll adjust it. I think we should, yeah.
Yes.
It was interesting that apartment dwellers are getting a deduction.
Yes. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thanks a lot, we'll do that.
I appreciate all your input. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to come forward? No one back there? Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion was made by Councilman Karifi, second by Councilman Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes. Before I go on to the consent agenda, I just wanted to make, Ellen, actually, it'll be more helpful to you also.
Yes.
I'd like to make my appointments for the finance committee, so they could start getting on track with you.
Oh, yes.
I did speak to those individuals. I just, I had mentioned to Mr. Paluso earlier today, and I just want to know if you would still be interested in being on the finance committee?
Yes, your honor.
Great. And I spoke to Mrs. Graniani earlier tonight, as we were trying to get on our mailbox, I'd like to know if you still are interested in being on the finance committee?
Yes, I will.
Great. And I thank you two very much, and I know you'll be working hand in hand with Ellen and Anne.
Anne and-
Look forward to it, yeah.
Great, thank you again.
Yes, very good.
I appreciate it, both of you. Thank you, just so we get that ball rolling.
Absolutely, no.
Perfect.
We thank you for the appointments, and we will, we'll get a schedule set up.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Council president, before you continue, you did mention the finance committee, which is our internal committee here, but on the agenda, I do not see an area where committee status reports are. So I just encourage-
Matter of fact, that's, I noticed that also, that's why I brought up the finance committee. Is there anybody else that would like to, anyone, make, mention anything in regards to any reports they'd like to bring forward from their committee? I know everyone's newly appointed to them.
Well, I don't know where Khalid went, but his wife is here, so I think, where did he go? Oh, he's out in the hallway, but it doesn't matter, you can, going forward, when the new clerk starts, we're going to need some committee things on the agenda. How's that?
Yes, those are all little things that we're going to insert there, yes.
Okay, I'm kidding. I'm kidding, you don't have to remember. It's nice to pass it along. And while we're at it, I just wanna thank Nora.
Yes.
And Lucy, and Sue, and Leslie, and my aunt, for just, you know.
Everybody's helping out, yes.
Doing the work, all working all together, so, so, day in and day out, and it's been a lot of, you know, a lot of work, and I wanna applaud them, you know, and thank them for all their hard work, and was, and was happy to work as a team, and we did it together, and it showed the fine caliber of people you have here in Precipity.
Yes, absolutely.
And we didn't miss it.
Thank you again.
Oh, thank you, thank you. But, yeah, they didn't, nobody missed a beat. Like I said, the election went smoothly, and the dog licenses are done, and, you know, people are saying, "I didn't, oh, my check wasn't lost in the mail," so we did okay.
Great, we're moving forward.
But I'm very happy that there's a clerk coming in.
Yes, absolutely.
By working together, we can accomplish much, really.
Yeah, thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Thanks.
The other question I had on the committees, we've been getting some comments from committees as new members, they were asking for dates and times to be put on our calendar on the website, and what I'm gonna encourage a new clerk to do is to gather all the information and to work with you, Ellen, to determine who all the existing members are, the new members, when their terms are due, who the chairs are, their contact information, and to update our website with Mr. Precipity.
In fact, today, as I said, Khalid was here, and Leslie, who's been working on that, did show him a spreadsheet that, you know, I know she reached out for the spelling on two people's names, so we'd have that correct. But, but the thing is, she said, "When I put this in a little bit better order, I'll, you know, give it, give it over to you," and he'll work on that with her. And he's already, you know, again, something that was just mentioned, he already was asking something about it, so that was good.
Great, thank you. Also, before we go into the consent agenda, is there any resolution, are we reappointing or suggesting for Burgess Associates as an engineer? I believe that was a discussion at the last council meeting.
Well, the appointments are for the mayor to make, so when he makes them and brings them forward, it'll be considered.
Well, do you talk about the resolutions that aren't here now?
Yeah.
What we're gonna do is, you read the consent agenda, I'm gonna say a few words, and if somebody wants to pull them, so go through the consent.
No, he's on the.
There's nothing on there.
There's not the on air.
Oh, there's nothing on there?
I don't think his, I think.
It wasn't up yet.
Oh, I apologize.
It wasn't up yet. His, that appointment, that was what that was, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay. There was two resolutions that I'd like to make a motion to vote on separately.
Yeah, you gotta do, go through the consent agenda. Read this first.
Yeah, and then, we got it covered, so.
Consent agenda, be it resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and uncontroversial by the township council and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless council members so request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Here's where I come in. Any council members here that wish to have any consent items removed to be voted on individually, please advise us now on the resolution, so take some time to go through them, and if you want that item, or that resolution pulled, we'll vote on that individually. Okay, which two were they?
Okay, I have one, Resolution 2015-029. And you want it individually, or you want both of them?
Yeah, what's the other one?
Resolution 2016-033, for only discussion purposes. I'd like to ask if Ms. Cucci can have a discussion on that, since it's a very important element, she's worked so hard on it.
Good, thank you.
I'd like to have our 2016-025, voted on individually.
Okay. Okay. Any other ones of interest? Mike?
No.
Okay. Okay, so what I'll do is, we'll go through the ones that we're going to vote on individually. I'll call for a roll call on that, and we'll start off with Resolution 2016-025. This resolutions of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, confirming the appointment and awarding a contract for professional engineering services to Adams, Reedman, and Higgin, Inc. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi?
No.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
No.
And Mr. Valori?
Abstain.
Two no, one yes, one abstain.
There were two yes.
It was two yes, two no.
Two yes, two no, one abstain.
Okay, Resolution 2015-029. Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, confirming the appointment and awarding a contract for professional engineering services for Alamo Engineering Group. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
No.
Mr. Valori?
Yes. Resolution 2016-033. Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, confirming the appointment and awarding a contract for professional services to Stephen K. Doug Smith, golf courses design. You want to add to it?
Yes, I'd like them to have a discussion.
Yes, we, last year, the council and, was able to give us the ordinance, and we had presentations for doing some work up the golf course, and one of those was a long-awaited plan to do a driving range, and I am very excited to be part of this process. We interviewed three different architects, it's a golf architect, and a golf course architect, and landscape architects, and they came in with their plans and their discussions, and Stephen K. had come up three times and looked at the area and laid out three or four different plans. In addition, he teaches, with the person that we're going to hopefully appoint today, teaches golf management and, and landscape architecture for golf courses down at Rutgers. He has done numerous golf courses, and, and what I liked about him was he had, believe it or not, mud on his boots, you know, one of those kinda guys that got in there and just looked at it and measured, and he's working with us within our budget, and I felt that he wasn't going to over-design, well, we all did, it's a whole group of us. Also, he is going to include it in this, is do a master plan for the golf courses, which is very important. We've talked about this at length a little bit with, when we did the budget process last year, well, this, included in this plan will be, what do we have to do for the golf courses? And I thought it was very reasonable, so, once we award this, it'll take some time and includes the drawings, the working drawings, everything, and we'll be working with the committees to do this. So I'm very excited to present this to you.
Right, and Ann, at the same time, will you be keeping the public updated on any of the drawings and plans?
Yeah, we're also part of the process Ellen talked about last week, going into the new year with the new council, was reporting on a monthly basis of where we are with the utilities, like we had before with the sewer. The golf course will be part of that, because we do have three big projects going on at the same time, so I'm very excited about it.
We're looking forward to that. So, Councilman Paluso, do you wanna vote on this individually, or do it as the entire consent agenda?
If nobody objects, we can do it with the entire. I just wanna ensure that we understand.
Thank you very much.
How much work was put into this, and the efforts that Ms. Cucci has done.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna have Mr. Paluso read the consent agenda again, applying to all those other resolutions.
Okay, consent agenda, be it resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the township council, and will be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Paluso, second by Councilman Karifi. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Council President, procedurally, and I think the record is clear as to what is intended, but procedurally going forward, I think the proper protocol would be to make a motion to remove, hold those, hold those in abeyance, vote on the consent agenda as amended, and then vote.
And then go towards that.
On those items that were pulled individually. I think the record is clear as to what the council intended, there's no question about that in this instance, but, but going forward, I would recommend that approach.
Let me ask you a question, you're always so very talkative, why didn't you chime in when I was doing that? I have my little cheechy here, I didn't see you.
I, I didn't want to interrupt the, the flow at the moment, and as I said, I think the record is very clear in terms of what was intended, but I did wanna make a recommendation going forward, because I think that is the, the better protocol.
Okay, so we're starting, we're kind of agreeing on this?
Yeah.
That's good.
Yes, sir, Mr. Council President.
Great, thank you. One thing that I did just take out of order here was minutes for approval, 'cause that was in the very beginning, actually, there was none, so I wanted to put that up there on the, the record there. We're gonna go to ordinances and introductions. Ordinance 2016-01, Mr. Karifi?
An ordinance amending ordinance 2015:24, entitled, "An ordinance establishing white-collar salary ranges for the Township of Precipity Troy Hills. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at the meeting of the Township Council, the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, held on January 19, 2016, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on February 16, 2016, at 7:30 p.m., prevailing time, or as soon thereafter, as the matter may be reached, at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law." Motion to approve the resolution by myself.
Second, Graniani.
Motion made by Councilman Karifi, second by Councilwoman Graniani. Roll call?
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mrs. Graniani?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes. Resolution is not consent agenda. Mrs. Graniani, Resolution 2016-038?
Resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, authorizing a person-to-person transfer of plenary retail consumption license for 1515 LLC.
Second.
Okay.
Yes?
Is it okay for discuss, just to give you?
With you, anytime. Don't, don't mind what John says, anything you wanna say.
No, I don't think I'm going out of order, but just, just because Councilman Paluso wanted, you know, doing his due diligence to, wanted some, a little bit more information, so Nora pulled the file, and just so you're aware of it, you know, I know we don't keep all the addresses in our heads, but this location is the location where the Stanbury Group is looking to build, you know, build a center.
Yes.
Upscale restaurants is part of that, and this was the, the only liquor license that was left, so they were very proactive in pursuing that, so this is, you know, oftentimes, you know, Rob was correct in saying to the effect of, where was it gonna be transferred to? It's not actually going to the restaurants, but they wanna hold on to it because of the